Hello, everybody. Welcome to our January Town Hall meeting. And go 49ers. It's a it's gonna be a good game, so we'll try to keep the meeting short. And try to address as many questions as we can. Thank you so much for making it to the meeting today. So why don't we get started? And a quick intro of myself. My name is Rishi Kumar. I work in tech, work in the big data analytics, the I M L space. Work for companies like IBM and Cisco in the past. And I believe in applying the tech framework of finding solutions in government. And it's a good story playing out. The people of Saratoga reelected me with the most votes in sixty four years of Saratoga for getting things done. And if you have seen the congressional tech hearings. We I do the cringe binge. I sit down with the popcorn, have a good laugh. Because our congressional leaders are totally inept with respect to tech. Silicon Valley has never had a tech savvy congressional leader, not in a million years. And I could change that. And you know, our congressional leaders are not only inept with tech. But they're also inept with all the different challenges of Silicon Valley, such as California fires, the lack of water infrastructure, housing, traffic homelessness problem. And and they are ransacking malls, breaking into cars. Governor Gavin Newsom just declared California as a third world nation. And that's the unfortunate story of what's playing out in Saratoga. We believe in rolling up the sleeves and finding solutions. And this is the reason why we succeeded as a council member here in Saratoga. And we are looking to take this approach, this energy, these this innovative stances and policies to Washington and see how we can address the top challenges of Silicon Valley. Running in twenty twenty in the November election against an incumbent who's been in office for forty four long years. A career politician, I totally respect her urge to run, but the world has changed dramatically. And with all these different challenges, we need approaches, we need insights to address them. And that's the reason why we are running against Congresswoman issue once again in twenty twenty two. In the twenty twenty run, we did better than any challenger in the last thirty years of this congressional district. We did hundred and twenty seven thousand votes and the win number was hundred and seventy two thousand. So we believe we can pull this off with your support. And you know, take a look at our website. We have lots of policy papers that I personally written, talking to professors nationwide to carve out a stance that will be productive, not only for Silicon Valley, but also will be helpful for America. Because I do believe that we are sliding downhill right now with all the different challenges that have been imposed upon America and our citizens. And I believe in term limits. I believe in not taking any PAC money, special interest group money. I believe in problem solving and the keyword search on my website, rishikumar.com works really well. So please do take the time to find some policy papers that are near and dear to you and see if I deserve your support. And with that, just in the interest of time, let's get on with some of the questions that have come to us. And these questions are picked up on the chat message here, the chat window, but also from from the surveys and and the RSVPs that we got. So why don't we get started? Okay, so let's get back to some questions. Let's get the question started, if I may. And let's see. Okay, so the first question that comes to us is about, well, interestingly, it's about French Bulldogs. Can you believe that? Apparently, there are French Bulldogs being stolen at gunpoint in California. I'm disgusted as to what California has become. And this is an anonymous question, strangely. Okay, and and you know, for sure, California is an absolute mess. And like I said, borrowing Governor Gavin Newsom's recent words, California looks like a third world country. And there is damage that has been drought by over regulation, by dysfunction, by crime, by homelessness and high taxes that contribute towards the regression of our golden state. And we'll break down some of the complex challenges that lie ahead of us. But I leave it at this because the next question actually is is in that same thread. And the next question is sadly from Atherton, who's talking about how the Amazon boxes scattered across the Los Angeles railroad tracks created a very stark image of California. And I fear an escalation of crime and armed gunmen going door to door in the night. And you know, I moved to Silicon Valley in the year two thousand. And I don't think so, we had the magnitude of issues that we have today. And it's really sad to see this now. If I recall, in the nineteen, in the eighteen sixties, actually, we we witnessed the very first we witnessed the first, somebody's calling me, the railroad robberies were happening in nineteen sixties, sorry, eighteen sixties. And and we are seemingly back back to that where, you know, the law and order situation is probably going to be one of the the most important challenges in the upcoming election. In the June primary, the voting begins in May, early May. And also with the November general election, if you see the New York City mayorship, it was a single issue that decided Eric to be the next mayor. That was law and order. And so if I look at the data on this, the crime has skyrocketed in pretty much every every region of Silicon Valley. And we need some approaches on this. So my my track record, by the way, the reason why we were reelected with the most votes in sixty four years of Saratoga, because we were able to tackle some of the tough challenges. And I don't believe no challenge is too big or too small. You know, if people are affected by it, then we have to step up and do something about it. And in the year twenty twelve, from twenty twelve to twenty sixteen, the Saratoga burglaries had gone up by by almost a hundred percent. And so I started working on it. And I was told initially that, Rishi, don't bother about crime as a council member because you will drop the real estate price of Saratoga. And you know, I I shrunk my shoulders. I said, look, if there's a problem, I need to do something. And I started an effort. And lo and behold, we dropped burglaries by almost fifty percent year to year, which is the greatest drop in in Saratoga's history. And and in fact, greater than any drop in Silicon Valley amongst any of the Silicon Valley cities. So take a look at my website, rishikumar.com/safety. And my promises will keep fighting to make sure we reduce crime. Okay, I'm back. Let's go to the next question. So I believe the next question is actually, it's probably the 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 top issue for the upcoming election and everybody is affected by it. The question is Ray from Saratoga is asking, what's your opinion on the housing element? What are options in not complying? Ah, so you know, I think many of our cities now are grappling with the housing element. And what is the housing element? It's basically a state mandate to build housing. And so we actually appealed that state mandate, the Rena numbers, along with many other cities. Our appeal was rejected because we believe the the code, the housing code that we have received is very high. So to get such a context, back in twenty eight years ago, in twenty fourteen, then I was first running for city council back in those days. We were working with four hundred housing units that was allocated as part of our housing element. And fast forward eight years later, and we are at at seventeen hundred and twelve housing units, four times. And if you look at what happened over the last eight years in terms of how many units we built, Saratoga did not reject any projects, did not reject any permits request. And we did between, I've heard from a staff like hundred and fifty to about two hundred units. So we, let's say we did fifty percent of that. And we are supposed to do four times. And given the fact that we did only about two hundred, let's say, approximately in the last seven years, what are the chances of us doing at least half of that, which is about eight fifty? And what the process is, we will be evaluated at the midpoint in in basically exactly four years from after we be certified to see how many housing units we have built. And if we fail, which likely every city will fail because arena numbers are inflated. And by the way, we are in the process of sending out letters to the California State Auditor to appealing to these inflated arena numbers and calling for a complete audit. Because it's it's not right what's going on. So getting back to the numbers. So once we fail, what happens is it's a classic chess game that has been set up by by the Sacramento legislators. So let's look at Senate Bill eight twenty eight. Senate Bill eight twenty eight essentially forced eight C D to mandate and inflated Rena numbers. So Rena numbers that were provided to every city was much higher than normal. And with the objective of building housing, nobody says that housing is a problem. We all agree we need housing, but we have to do it right on the basis of a proper urban plan and on the on the basis of an infrastructure. So once we, once we have an inflated Rena numbers, we are set up to fail. And how is that? So we will never be able to to hit the the numbers that we need to hit. And you know, essentially, we'll be out of compliance at the midpoint. And when we are out of compliance, there is another state law waiting, waiting to hit us. That's Senate Bill thirty five. So developers would show up and essentially apply Senate Bill thirty five on every lot, any property, any property in Saratoga, circumvent the city council without any public hearing and build what they would like to build. It's very scary. As if the local government has no say into this. So there are two things ongoing, which is ballot measure. In fact, we have over hundred and fifty volunteers in Saratoga who are currently collecting signatures. And this is something that I've been working with our community over the last few weeks, working with ourneighboradvoices.com to to get these signatures so that we can put the petition forward to the Secretary of State for review. And if we get one point five million signatures by April, then this ballot measure would be placed on the November ballot. And and if that is passed by a majority of California, then we will essentially move forward with the State of California Constitutional Amendment. And that will restore the integrity of the local laws. And so Senate Bill five, Senate Bill nine, Senate Bill ten, Senate Bill eight twenty eight, Senate Bill thirty five would all be null and void, and we will rely upon the local laws when it comes to housing. So I'm firmly behind this. You know, our city council in Saratoga has has passed a resolution in support of this particular ballot measure. And so are many other cities locally. So anyway, that's a snapshot of the housing element challenge. We are set up for failure. And no matter you pass it, you don't pass it, you know, it's going to be. This has totally divided our our community. And people are feeling the feeling the angst, neighbors are pitted against neighbors. Everyone, nobody wants the high density housing next to their home. And they're all trying to push it in other areas. And that and this has really stressed the very fabric of our cities. And Saratoga is a little bit ahead of the game. And this will likely play out in every city in California. And and there will be a lot of angst that will be caused. Lots of folks who are very, very stressed, I've talked to so many of them who have reached out. The stress levels are very high with respect to this. And I believe the state of California is to blame for this mess we are in. Because it's not a very pragmatic urban plan at all. It's a plan that does not have foundation, that is not well thought out. And this is going to disrupt the very future of Silicon Valley. If you look at the Rena audit letter, go to rishikumar.com slash what is it? Just go to slash managed growth, rishikumar.com/managedgrowth. And you will find lots of links on the top that includes the Rena audit link. And if you click on that, it's a letter that is ready for you to copy, paste and send to the email address that is listed on there. So I highly recommend that you organize the the petition signatures for your city and that you also that you also send out a letter to the California State Auditor asking them to conduct a thorough audit of the Rena numbers. Because our cities and towns are in jeopardy. And and this is extremely sad to see this happen. And we all need to push back and see how we can do the right thing. Because if we if we if we don't pay heed to this, this will disrupt our communities like like nothing can. Because after eight years, things will get a lot more stringent and much more will magnify a lot of our problems. There is no fix for the infrastructure problems with the water or with traffic or even parking with many of these flawed laws. And this is not how you 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 create a proper urban plan. If you have been to any ancient city of the world, you know, a city that was formulated like thousands of years back, you will find that many a times, the the planning was not there. It sort of just came about by the banks of a river. And you go through really small, small streets, tiny streets weaving in and out. And and then when you look at the current plan we have in in cities of Silicon Valley, it's very well structured, very well planned out. That creates good quality of life mostly. And so we we need a better approach to this instead of just forcing matchbox housing without with scant regard to all the underlying elements of the foundation of a proper urban plan. So please pay heed to this. I'm sorry, this was a very long winded answer, but this is something that we have been dealing with since mid-December now. It's almost six weeks and there is no end to the train wreck that is that lies ahead of us. So anyway, I'll stop here and let's go to the next question. Okay, let's see. Rishi, the solar program will disappear. Are you going to do anything about it? And this is Deborah from Los Altos Hills. So yes, who needs green energy, right? Let's kill solar, really? You know, Sacramento is actually responding to PG&E and and California Edison, Sempra Energy, these are the two the private utility companies, and they are obviously impacted with solar. So they are trying to kill solar. And if you look at P U C, P U C is there as as resident representing of people of California. They are appointed by the governor. But if you look at the cherished backgrounds of the P U C commissioners, many of them are from the utility industry. So it's like fox guarding the hen house. And and so unfortunately, the interest of the people may not be met. And this is the reason why the solar program has been cut right now. And there is a lot of pressure building up. I saw that Arnold Schwarzenegger is now behind making sure that this does not happen. There is a solar petition around. You can find it on my website, just search for solar and sign the solar petition to restore sanity. And this actually alters the foundation of California's solar program. And will lead to a decarbonization of the economy, will also increase warming, global warming and deplete the earth of its resources. Now, California should be the benchmark standard because we are a state that that is ahead most of these things. So please visit rishikumar.com/climatic to see some of my ideas around this. Okay, so let's go to the next question. It's from Gwen in Montevideo. I've had so many of my family members who are perishing to drugs. It is tragic. Pentanol is fatal, small amounts can can basically kill people. I'm outraged with what is going on in America. So Gwen, I'm so sorry to hear that. A million people have died due to the opioid crisis. And then we saw that a few companies like Bicassin, Johnson and Johnson, Purdue Pharma, and there's one more I'm missing, and they ended up being fined about twenty five billion dollars. I saw the dope sick on Hulu. And that's a pretty stark docu-drama, which basically talks about how Purdue Pharma rampant greed and how lives have been destroyed all across the United States. Part of it was set in West Virginia. And it's just, it is very sad to see that that this could be happening. And you know, we we need to figure out a way to stop this. Now Congressman Schu chairs the House Health Subcommittee. She is in charge of America's healthcare. But she has not held a hearing on the opioid crisis because she's the number one recipient of pharma money in the United States House of Representatives. So she is, she has championed pharma extremely well. But I would really like to ask her to champion the people stuff. And this is one of the reasons why I'm challenging her. We are both Democrats, but I believe that a platform is very sacred, hallowed ground. And you have to be there standing for the people, which is what I've tried to do as a council member of Saratoga. To some extent, this platform, this political platform is is not conferred about anybody and everybody. So when people trust you, you have to do the right thing. And I hope Congressman Schu will will step up and do something about it. And it's time, it's time that we do something about it. And our politicians should should get away from from playing ball with with some of the lobbyists from from those who are basically contributing to the campaign. Because that is not right. That is not right. And I would never ever play that game ever. Let's see if there are any other questions. Looks like people are in a hurry to get, the game begins in about thirty thirty minutes or so. So I would like to continue a couple of things. And so, you know, San Mateo Daley, you know, part of the district is in San Mateo. And even with the redistricting, we still have a pretty decent chunk. They are basically like Hafun Bay, Pacifica, which were added. And then also we have communities like Lumamar, Ladera and Piscadero. And then we also have La Honda, Putlal Valley, with Sir at Atherton and Menlo Park. So that is pretty much the area of San Mateo County. I believe it's about a hundred thousand people out of a total district population of seven hundred and sixty thousand. So in the last run, San Mateo Daley was writing, they they had written some, I would call it bad stuff about about our run. And we ignored it. But but recently, somebody reached out to San Mateo Daley, asking them, why have they not covered my run? And and they basically asked San Mateo Daley the question. And Mark Grossart, who happens to be a former council member, I believe it was Daily City, and he reached out basically asking that willing to cover a little bit about us. And so he sent us some questions, so I truly appreciate that, Mark. So question number one, I'm going to go through and see. I'll put this on record here in terms of the questions and our responses towards that. So the first question was, well firstly, Mark wanted to meet for coffee. And I'm, you know, with the pandemic and the 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 virus, the way it has escalated over the last few weeks. You know, it's it's better to not meet in person. So that was my, I my request to Mark that if you can send us the questions, we'll be happy to send your responses through. So we sent our responses earlier today. And I'm going to basically talk about, you know, how and what these questions and responses were. So question number one, why are you aligned with the Democratic Party as opposed to the Republican Party? What principles do you hold, which can you join one over the other? Related to this question is why Republicans might vote for you in general, as I believe for your race, the top two in the primary gave the contest in the general regardless of party. So firstly, Matt, I have to say this to you, whether you published it or not, the San Mateo Daily is undermining the efforts of all the elected leaders by calling someone like me Batman. Just because we dropped crime by fifty percent in the city of Saratoga, is that the reason why? Explained at rishikumar.com/safety. Or by calling my run as crazy, I saw one of the articles. Just because we challenged and established forty four year career politician. And check out the report card of the forty four year career politician at rishikumar.com/reportcard. I was also expecting to be called the crazy water world guy, as we have been battling, San is a water company. And I've rejected nine of their rate proposals explained at rishikumar.com/what. The activism to fight for the people and not those with deep pockets got us reelected with the most votes in the sixty four year, sixty four year history of the city. In the twenty twenty congressional election, did you know, Mark, that we did better than any other challenger in the last thirty years of Congressman Schu's congressional run? She was worried as she was facing a democratic challenger, democratic democratic challenger in the general election, the very first time in fifteen terms. And campaign like There's No Tomorrow, spending two point three times more than what we spent. Fifty percent of her money coming from PACs and special interest groups. Bottom line, the San Mateo Daily portrayals are definitely not exemplary of journalism at its finest, and America expects better. And now, unfortunately, I see you guys doing the same thing with Supervisor David Knapp and his run for Congress for Jackie's seat. I hope you will take this constructive feedback as your construct, as your credibility is at stake. Okay, so back to the answer. You know, I'm not driven by partisan politics, but by a pragmatic agenda designed to deliver for the people. Yes, I'm running as a Democrat and I work at the behest of people, not the lobbyists, unlike many politicians of today on both sides of the aisle. In the twenty twenty run, we got support based on this pragmatic getting things done agenda, not so much on party affiliations. I believe in tackling the challenges facing our country head on. A mindset I've embodied as a council member in Saratoga, applying the tech framework of problem solving. I was humbled and honored to be reelected with the most votes in the sixty four year history of our city. I seek to take the getting things done approach to Washington. And that would be refreshing, right, Mark? We made top two in twenty twenty and believe we have an excellent shot at making top two again. I implore you, the San Mateo Daily Journal, please do not smear candidates who run for public office. Instead, please write intelligent, well researched op-ed pieces. Interview the candidates and let them differentiate themselves like other newspapers and periodicals of the area are doing, making it totally unbiased. Silicon Valley is filled with very bright people and they can see through these things in a nanosecond. Okay, on to the next question. Given you will probably face the democratic incumbent, what is it about you that stands out? Okay, so here is, here is, there are three points to this. Silicon Valley has never sent a tech savvy representative to Congress. What a difference that would make, right? I do the cringe binge every time we have a congressional tech hearing. You may have seen the spoofs on YouTube. As a tech executive and based on that experience, my plan is to grow our innovation economy to benefit both our economy and the American people, bridge the income inequality while ensuring that tech does not trample upon people's rights. Congressman Schu has barely been able to tread water, navigating the complexities of this tech sector and has failed to deliver. It's a shame. It's a shame, given that Facebook and Google are in her district. It makes for a really nice drama to see her scold them on national television, but she has been absent for years and truly addressing anything for decades with respect to the tech challenges. Visit rishikumar.com/tech. Secondly, I would like to say that I will not sell out on the city council. I rejected the land developer campaign money. In Congress, I will continue to reject all corporate PAC money and never sell out to the special interest. Congressman Schu, by contrast, is the number one recipient of pharma money in the US House of Representatives. Number two is a good friend, Kevin McCarthy. What she uses is a tremendous platform and cloud when Congressman Schu misuses it. She is a chair of the House Subcommittee. But instead of lowering prescription drug prices, she has increased the price of American healthcare with a legislation for which she received many awards from the biologic industry. Did she challenge pharma during the opioid crisis to stop millions of deaths? Of course not. That's not the game I would ever play as I serve at the behest of the people and no one else. And the third item is, when I'm knocking on doors, I constantly hear a yearning for fresh blood. I wonder if that's Count Braculio. What happens if Count Braculio opens the door? People are actually tired of politicians who stay too long and do very little. I strongly believe that we need to bring fresh voices into our government. That's why I've been an advocate for term limits for all elected positions. The California State Legislature has term limits, and I believe it should be the same for the United States Congress. Term limits will bring new energy, new leadership and alleviate corruption when sharing a political turnover. Congressman Anna Schu has just passed four bills in thirty years in Congress, most of which are as minor as changing the name of a post office. I checked with a congressional rep in Washington and the person said the only bills that matter are the bills that you have sponsored. And the truth is Congressman Schu has has sponsored only four bills while claiming forty five. If you look at Congressman Rohana from from the next district over, our neighbor, he's done many more consequential bills in just a few years. What does that tell you? The job of a legislator is to legislate and Congressman issue has failed. Congressman issue has enriched her campaign coffers, taking millions from almost every corporate interest or PAC imaginable. Championing their causes and not those of the people. We can no longer allow career politicians to reap decades of benefits for themselves while doing nothing for those they represent. That is why I'm so strongly and fiercely believing in the term limits. Okay, final question from Matt. Recently, the Speaker of the House and the Majority Leader in the Senate. Were unable to pass legislation because of a few Democratic members across the aisle. And sided with the Republicans. The Democrats intend to take another shot at these matters in two thousand and twenty two. What's your stand on the matters and questions? So it's very simple. Shoot for the stars, but aim at one star in particular. We must classify our priorities and pursue the one or two things that are most important or achievable. Negotiate and come to common agreements. I would work with Senator Manchin to create an alternate economy. How about seeding the startup economy for West Virginia and create an alternate to the coal economy? That is a wonderful opportunity for the Silicon Valley congressperson to team up with Senator Manchin and be impactful at the national stage. I would do that, bringing some creativity that has been part of my council member strategy. But we haven't seen Rep issue navigate the national stage adroitly. We have to operate smartly. I would not fold at the negotiating table. I would work to improve the lives of their constituents. And seek to partner with them. At the same time, I'll never sell out to my own values and everything I would do. Would be entering entered on delivering for the people of the sixteenth district. That would be a huge focus for me. Anyway, those were the three questions. I truly appreciate you tuning in, watching this. And any further questions can be emailed to us at campaign at rishi two thousand and twenty two dot com. And please do visit rishikumar dot com and the elections are coming up in early May. That's the vote by mail and the election is set for June seventh. And we believe we are poised to do extremely well based upon the last three years of effort we have put into this race. And some clear cut ideas on policies and perspectives for Silicon Valley. And for our American people. So thank you all. Let's go forty Niners. Let's win this one. And we'll be in touch. Bye, everybody.